We also, our second presentation, we have representatives from Saginaw Promise here today. Kendrick Kemp is the main spokesperson, I believe, who will be giving a presentation along with Mayor Joyce Seals.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. And, Mr. Manager, thank you for putting us on the agenda today. How appropriate it is for us to be here today with a strategic planning, as well as having our students here, because we'll be talking about students in just a few moments, but also about some of your strategic objectives, which I think the Promise actually meets. Now, let me tell you, because we have a lot of new council people, and you really don't know about the Saginaw Promise. And in 2008, our legislature came together and decided to pass some legislation that said we would have a Promise program in the state of Michigan. And it basically was copied after the Kalamazoo Promise. And many of you know about Kalamazoo Promise. A couple of years ago, the President of the United States came to their first graduating class. One thing about Kalamazoo, they have those billionaires over there, a whole bunch of them, who put enough money on the table to have enough scholarship money for students who come and live in the Kalamazoo district. They can go to any four-year college they want to go to. Their entire tuition is paid regardless of income, and people have flocked to that area as a result of the Kalamazoo Promise. So, our legislature said, "You know what? This is a good program. We need to copy it in the state of Michigan." And so, in 2008, they established this legislation, and of course, I was fortunate enough, in January, I was at the inauguration of President Obama, and got a call at my hotel room. And it's from the governor of this state, of the state at that time. Governor Granholm was said, "We want Saginaw to put their application in for a promise." And I said, "Well, that's great, and you know, it's a school-based program, as well as a city-based program." And the manager at that time decided that it would be best to let the school take the lead. Now, one of the things that you should know, even though the school took the lead for this program, nevertheless, we know that the city was supposed to be involved. And as the mayor of the city at that time, I was one of those original members of that board, and was the vice chair. Our original vice chair was John Humphries, and I am currently the chair of the Saginaw Promise. This is my second term as the promise chair. So, I wanted to let you know that I think that's important you to know, that where it came from. Now, one of the things I want you to know is that around the state of Michigan, many of the Promises have city council people and mayors on their boards. We don't have it here. We've been disconnected since I've left council, and we have not had the provision. So, one of the things I'm saying to you, Mr. Mayor, I would like to have at least an ex-official member to come to the meetings. It's very important. Why is it important that you come? Because we know, I think the United Way, I was part of the United Way Board for about ten or so years, and they have a program, an interactive computer program, that shows that when you increase the education of your community, crime goes down, blight goes down, all the negative behaviors goes down. So, it's in the best interest of a community, for their community and their students to be better educated. And what has happened as a result of this program, which Mr. Kendrick Kemp is going to show you, is that we have seen an increase in the graduation rates at Saginaw High and Arthur Hill, tremendous graduation rates, as a result, because we believe that the Promise brings hope to students who perhaps did not have money to go to school, but now, regardless of their income, as long as they meet their requirements, they can get these monies to help them go to college. And that's a powerful piece. The other powerful piece, I think, that we had a Dr. Brown, who came from Kalamazoo, and we actually brought her here and invited many people to come and hear her speak. She said, "Now that they've been involved in their program for five years, they've had a 20 percent reduction in youth crime." I said, "20 percent? Do we need 20 percent reduction in youth crime?" And they're saying that the Promise, they have seen that, their police chief, they couldn't believe it. So, I want those unintended consequences too, in our community. That's why I'm going at this. It's a positive, a positive approach to crime reduction and increasing the attractiveness of our community, because we want businesses. My husband's a doctor. He gets letters all the time, trying to bring him to a community. You know what they say? They talk about the education. They talk about the crime rate. Come on, we need to make sure. And it meets all of your goals, as you had talked about. I was sitting here, what is the dream for our community? You said education. Here it is. So, if you talk about trying to meet your objective, the educational objective, then I need for the council staff to step up and be part and know what's happening with the Saginaw Promise, because this is not just a school district effort. This is a city effort. Our faiths are intertwined. If the city does well, the school district does well. When the school district does well, guess what? The city does well as well. Then it says revenue and taxes, as well as homeownership. Hey, guess what? You get more people. More people have come to Kalamazoo. We need more people staying here, retaining what we have, and increasing and recruiting people to come into the city, because there is hope in this program. It is an economic development program. Some people just see it as a scholarship program, but it is an economic, an economic development program. With that, I'm going to ask Kendrick, are you coming at this time? Laura Yaki, who is our treasurer of the Saginaw Promise, who works for Chemical Bank, is now, has gotten a promotion, she'll tell you about that. And she's going to come at this time and speak.
Good afternoon. As Joyce mentioned, I'm Laura Yaki. I am the, I work with Chemical Bank. I am the Saginaw Community Area President for Chemical Bank, treasurer of the Saginaw Promise. And Chemical Bank, we have supported the Promise for three years. We feel it's very important to our community. Chemical Bank has a loan production office in the city, but other than that, we do not at this time yet have branches in the city. But we feel it's very important for our whole area. And basically, I call it an all-inclusive program, in that it's not based on grades, income, academic or athletic ability. By sheer residency, graduating from high school and qualifying for a two-year or four-year program, you get the funding. So, we are not quite up to where Kalamazoo is. It is a last-dollar scholarship that we have here in Saginaw. But we feel it supports and benefits a diverse population of students who can't always afford to pay for college due to their economic status, or the culture of higher education may not be prevalent in all families, and we are trying to change that culture. So, if our kids are more educated, they're more likely to get a job, have marketable skills, and break the cycle of poverty. As we see it, this will be a better, more educated workforce, potential employees for the businesses to hire. We have several dozen businesses, not only ones located in the city, but throughout the county, that have supported the Promise. And it's our ultimate hope that we can bring families back to the district, residents to the city, and bring in new businesses eventually. We do consider it an economic development program, not just a scholarship program. So, it benefits all of us here in the county. And with that, I'll, Kendrick?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members, Ms. Morales, I want to thank you for the time. I was at the PERC breakfast a few weeks ago during the State of the County event, and I sat there and I listened to everyone talk about all the great things that's happening in Saginaw County, in the city of Saginaw, and I didn't hear one thing mentioned about the Saginaw Promise. And that made me think, "I need to do my job better." Because since we started this thing in 2010, the Promise has made tremendous strides in this community. We've raised over $300,000 for scholarships for our students. $300,000 raised for scholarships. We approved over 267 applications for students. Now, not all of our students receive the scholarship, because many of them attend community college, where the Pell Grant covers their tuition. We have a last-dollar program, scholarship program, so we only put in when students really need the funding. So, we've done that. Ninety-seven percent of the students in the Saginaw Public School District have applied for college. A lot of them motivated by the fact that this Promise is out there for them, okay? We're making strides in this community, much like Kalamazoo. Kalamazoo started this in 2005. They have over 2,500 new students in Kalamazoo, in their school district. 2,500 new students in their district, thanks to their Promise program. They have over 11,000 new residents in Kalamazoo because of their Promise program. Kalamazoo is doing great, because the community had a vision. We need our city council members, we need our mayor's office and our city manager's office to become a part of this Promise. You talk about image building for the city. The Promise is the new image for this city. When you think of Pittsburgh, what they've done in Pittsburgh with their Promise program, they've stabilized their community. Pittsburgh had lost half of their population, from 700,000 to 350,000 people. They started their program a year after Kalamazoo. They've stabilized their population. We need to do the same thing here. We need to stabilize this population, then make it grow. The Promise is a jewel to the city of Saginaw, and to the surrounding areas. We need you to get involved. We've got the business community, thanks to people like Laura Yaki, Gil Johnson at Saginaw Valley Ford, Walmart Foundation, others involved in this. We need to make this the promotional piece, the image-building piece, the cultural growth piece for the city of Saginaw. And that's what we're trying to do, and we need your help. I want to thank you.
And we're going to make this quick, Mr. Manager, we're going to abuse our time today. But we want to say to you that, you know, on April 29th, Magic Johnson is going to be in town again. Here is a gentleman who is internationally known, who comes here free of charge. He doesn't charge us one dime. And then he leaves money here to assist us with the Promise. And he always encourages the students when he comes. And we hope that you will be there, in the house. And we want to recognize you when you come that night, that our city council is in the house. We have our school board members there, our board is there, but I'd like to also say that our city council also supports the effort. And one thing many of the people don't know in the audience is, our city council is one of few councils in the nation that doesn't get the proper compensation for what you do, because basically, you're volunteers. And we know that the affair that night cost $125, with very exclusive dinner. We call it a strolling dinner. And it does also give you your ticket into the program as well. But we hope that you will put that on your agenda for April 29th. It's a Tuesday evening, that you will be there and be part of that. We will get some tickets over. Mr. Manager, one of the things we want to do is, you know, at the school board right now, our teachers are our heaviest investors in the Promise, because they could, they got the vision that, you know, it's in their investment in their future to help this program to grow. We want our staff at the city to also see, there are some staff members who have stepped up, who've come to this affair, and have supported in the development office. I contacted them, and they did a little recruitment. But I'd like to have a larger recruitment, because it's in the best interest of the city. All right? And none of our board members are paid. We're here because we believe in, just like you believe in this city, that we can, we have a vision for a better future for our students and for our community. But in order to do that, we need your assistance. And I thank you in advance by faith that I will see you there, and we will have a designate from the mayor's office to the city of Promise, the Promise. Thank you. We'll answer any questions.
Questions, council members, any questions? Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Joyce Seals, thank you for being here. Mr. Kemp, Mr. Yaka?
Laura Yaki, Yaki, Yaki.
I know her, thank you. Just a couple of questions that I have. Mr. Kemp made a comment about the number of individuals who move in the city of Kalamazoo, as well as families. That's one question I have. Since your inception, how many new students and residents moved into the city as a result of the Saginaw Promise? That's one question. Also, what type of marketing component do you have beyond the ad? I've seen the ad, when you first started, the TV ad, but I'm interested in knowing, what type of marketing are we marketing to? The families, to the moms, to the dads, of those students who may have left the city schools for whatever reason? That's one other question. And you mentioned that to date, you have raised over $300,000. To date, approved over 267 applicants. Interested in knowing where those students, you know, came from, and what's college, how they are attending. Also, in terms of education, you know, I'm not speaking for everyone here, but I know everyone here is interested in education, you know? I know we are. And just a little information for you, I know when Councilman Burdock joined the city council, one of his platform was, "Well, I'm coming from the school board to be a champion on city council for the Saginaw Promise," okay? Because, you know, he's on the school board. Beyond that, this is the first formal presentation that I've heard from the Saginaw Promise since its inception.
It's my second, but that's good.
Okay, maybe I wasn't hearing anything. But in terms of council presentation on the board, I'm sure that's just a request. So, I'm not sure what role Mr. Burdock played on the team, but he was our liaison to the Saginaw Promise since its inception, and he just resigned. So, we've had, with that in mind, we have had representation on the Promise. So, you know, again, we're all interested in education, and just, I think the key is looking at the complex of the Saginaw City Schools now, as it stands, their schools closing.
Right.
Okay? So, again, I'm saying, you know, what are we doing to reach out to those families that may be relocating or making choices other than the city schools, that will attract them back into our city schools? So, we don't, we're not closing city schools, right? So, those are just some questions I have. I'm not sure if you can answer them now, but...
Well, we can answer some. One for sure, I will have Mr. Kendrick send you a copy of the list of students and where they've gone to college. We have all of that. For, we've had two cohorts thus far, and so we can give you that information easily. I'm sure we don't have that today, but we can get that to you right away. Secondly of all, I think, and since this is our second year, we said two cohorts, we have, our main goal at this point is retaining students, and we are looking at the recruitment piece. And until we level off the issues they've had this year, you know, with closing of schools and so forth, we're looking at some increase in the future, but retaining the students is most important. I think the school district had projected a huge loss of students the first year in the inception of the Promise, but it was a huge reduction, much smaller loss than they had anticipated. And I'm sure that has a lot to do with the campaign, as you talked about, that the Promise did. Now, we got a grant last year from the Walmart Foundation to assist us with marketing, and we are doing TV ads right now, and we're running some radio ads, and we're doing some things of that nature. Maybe Kendrick, would you like to speak some more to that?
Yes. Currently in progress. We just produced a television ad, thanks to a local sponsor, that will be airing next month. We're doing that. We also have a letter-writing campaign to parents. And you spoke of parents who no longer have their students in the district, or parents who are possibly not aware of the Promise. We have a letter-writing campaign, where we're sending letters out to parents, and we have done so in the past, to make sure that they know about the Promise. In terms of students, and our numbers continually falling in the district, you know, the district has lost students over the years, schools are continually being closed in the district, that was happening. That was happening. There's a number of schools, and I hate to speak for the superintendent, but there are a number of schools that should have been closed years ago, but weren't closed. We cannot control that. What we're doing is stabilizing the student population right now, is working. Last year, last spring, the Saginaw Public Schools reported their first increase in student enrollment in years. They have been losing students every year for the fall and the spring. Last spring, they recorded an increase. That shows us that there is hope, that things are starting to work in our favor for this program. So, I hope I answered some of your major questions.
Yeah, you did. I just, you know, I was looking for numbers. You said that a number of new students and residents became new citizens in the city of Kalamazoo.
Correct.
It'd be good to have that data, to say, well, X amount of students, as a result of us being who we are, you know?
Exactly. And we're working to get those numbers. That's not easy to come by. We're working to get it. And really, all we have to go by right now is the student population in the schools.
Sure.
So, we're working, we're trying to get it from realtors, we're trying to get it from city numbers and county numbers, to make sure we have the accurate data to support that mere increase in the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Tibbs?
He has something to say, but I did have a question.
Go ahead.
I probably understand the intent of the Saginaw Promise. What about the student that wants to go to a trade school?
Included.
Can that person apply?
Absolutely.
How many have applied for trade schools?
I can't tell you that breakdown right now.
Very few. How many?
Very few.
Very few.
We had one student apply for aviation school, which was more of a trade school. We had another apply for auto mechanic program. We have very few apply for trade schools.
In the area of globalization, I think people have lost sight of the fact that there are certain things you can't globalize. You can't outsource. And those are trades. You can't, you can't, you can't outsource a electrician, or a pipe fitter, or a welder, or anybody like that. And I'm really, I'm really concerned about the education of students in that area.
We will pay for it.
Not condemning colleges or universities, but I think, I think there's an area that's been neglected.
We agree, and that's one thing, we're very careful, even though it talks about supporting college scholarships, it's really post-secondary. And post-secondary is anything past high school, which is a certificate program, or a one-year program. It will cover that. The Promise will cover.
Our students are at 27 different colleges and universities in the state of Michigan. We have a number of students at MSU, at Central Michigan, at Saginaw Valley. And what we've learned with this program is that our students are applying for and being accepted at four-year institutions. So, they're doing the work that they need to do. We're trying to help them make two big steps.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Tibbs, did you have a comment?
Yeah. From understanding how the Promise loan is funded, the first two years is from private donations, and the second two years is from any increase that the city may realize from the influx of residents into the city. Are we, since our property tax has been stable for, well, or declining for the last couple of years, I mean, is that a possible issue looking forward?
It is. We think we're probably hit rock bottom in terms of property tax revenues going down. So, it can only go up, we hope. The state has projected, the state has done a projection for the next 10 years, and they projected that Saginaw should start receiving tax revenues this year, in terms of property tax values going up. And to get more into detail about what you're saying is that the Promise will receive 50% of any new tax property dollars devoted to education, and those dollars should start to go up soon, because again, I think we hit rock bottom.
And just my second point, and we're all about collaboration here, and trying to bring in residents. We did a similar, and this may be to the, to our manager as well, but we did a similar outreach to Delta College. I know over in our St. Stevens neighborhood, they're debating whether or not to close St. Stevens, or send students out to their school in the township. Obviously, we would like to have one less vacant building in our city. Are we educating those kids who are city residents, who would be attending schools in the city, that they would be eligible for this particular program? Because I'm assuming MLS students are eligible, St. Stevens students would be eligible.
That's right. As long as the school is in the city, we don't care whether they're part of the Saginaw Public Schools or not. They still qualify if they live in the city, and that school is in the city. They qualify. But now, Mr. Kendrick, we may have to make sure that we do contact that school and let them know that they would qualify if that school stayed in the city.
Appreciate it.
That's a marketing tool, though. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Also?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Clark?
Thank you. Good afternoon as well, Ms. Mayor. The, I agree with you on the comment about post-secondary. In fact, I really think we should be using that term all the time, instead of just college, because too many times, people equate college with a four-year program, and it does not have to be, nor are all our students cut out for four-year colleges. Councilman Caloris's comments about the trades is huge, that most, many people don't realize. And I'm bringing that up because my next question is, is the Promise addressing students at our own trade program, the Saginaw Career Complex?
Yes, absolutely, because it's part of the Saginaw Public Schools, and of course, many of their students, and you will see, once you get that list of students where they come from SCC or Saginaw High, many of them go half-time. We'd have to make sure we correlate the SCC students, so you can see where they're going.
I'm glad, because I think that's a very huge thing, that we don't want to miss out on that opportunity for those students. The second comment I've got, or question I've got, is what grades are we actually getting into the schools to try and, I guess the word is entice, give incentive, whatever you want to call it, to the students to start looking at the future of their education through the Saginaw Promise?
Well, right now, we'd say the Promise is targeting the high schools, but, in talking with Dr. Brown from Kalamazoo, they've actually gone down even to elementary, kindergarten, and first grade. And so, we brought her in, we've talked with her, and I think our school district, in talking with our superintendent, has begun to do the same kinds of things. And so, creating that vision for higher education, or something after high school for students in the beginning, I think is more fledgling now, but is our superintendent, as I should have had him here today, because he could have talked with you about that. But they are doing some things in our school as well.
Thank you. I think that's very huge, because families make decisions that are long-term. They don't just decide once the child is in high school. They decide when the child's in grade school. And if they have the idea of a promise that if they stay, you know, even if the child's in grade school, if they stay here, there's a future for that child in post-secondary education. To me, that's where we should be starting the, most of our education of the community, not necessarily the student. By that time, the student's going to have it. But the community needs to be educated when those children are in the lower grades.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. In fact, we have one of our benefactors who runs a business in the community, who has school children over at, over at the Old South School, what is it called? The Hanley. And one of the reasons he has, he was getting ready to move out of the city. He decided to stay because of the Promise. And that's what we're hoping that will happen in many of the cases.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Audrey, for coming, but we know where Anta Redditch came today. You're right, this is the opportune time to come, because had you not said it was citywide for city residents, and thank you, Councilman Clark, because my impression of the Promise was city schools only. Nobody has ever said anything different, nor did I ask. And so, now, that may, that may help, that may help everybody, because they won't just think that it's just for Saginaw Public Schools.
No, because that's, if they, we have a city resident who attends Michigan Lutheran Seminary, they're eligible. If they attend one of the alternative schools, the SVRC building, they have a school there, they live in the city, they qualify. If they attended Francis Ray and transferred to one of our high schools, they qualify. So, as long as that school is in the city of Saginaw, and they're residents of the city, they do qualify for the Promise.
So, in your marketing now, you're going to emphasize that?
Oh, yes.
It's just a suggestion, that you emphasize that it's not just Saginaw City Public Schools, it is the city. There's a great big difference in the public schools and the city.
And Kochville and Zouakki.
Okay.
So, if they're residents of Kochville, Zouakki, city of Saginaw, and attend schools in those areas, they are qualified.
Thank you.
Good question, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Ball?
Yes, Mr. Ball? Thanks for coming.
Yes.
I'm not familiar with the wet oil trades that they teach at the Saginaw Career Complex, but I was wondering, do they have electrical, pipe fitter, mill rights, tool and die, those trades like that, and machine repairmen? Do they have those trades that...
You know what? I don't know that for sure, but we can surely find out. It's something we should know. And we will find out and make sure that you're made aware of it, all the council people.
It'd be nice to market it, you know, let them know that they do have those type of trades at the Career Center, because there's a lot of guys that want to like working with their hands, and ladies like working with their hands. And, you know, electricians make, and pipe fitters make a lot of money.
I know they do.
And I'd like to know, can students reapply after they had went through school? Can they come back and apply after they're 19, 20, or 25, 30 years old?
There's a window. What is that window? Two years.
Two years at the high school?
Yes.
Okay, I was wondering if you guys are trying to tap into the... Okay, I was wondering if you guys are trying to tap into the funds, Mr. Obama put over $100 million to help with some trades, pre-apprenticeship classes. I was wondering maybe you guys could try to work with the state and see if you can get something to work with that. I'm trying my best to work with them too, to see if we can get some of those things here in the city of Saginaw.
Well, they've probably come through the school district, but we'd be more than happy to mention that to our superintendent.
All right.
Mayor Protem O'Neil?
Just one more. I, I agree with Councilman Clark in terms of the early exposure to the information. I do know we do have a birth through five program in the education school system, and that would be a great addition to the information that they currently provide to those parents of those infants on their initial visits. Just saying, as a result of your son or daughter staying in, in the Saginaw Public Schools, here are some benefits educationally. So, I think, you know, packaging that information at that level would also, I think, be an asset to retention, okay? Those, those parents, they may have all their children in the district, but having a new addition to the family, you know, that may be one of the things that say, well, you know, that, that is worth staying in the city for. So, just a suggestion, in terms of that, yeah.
Thank you, that's my answer. Any other questions? Any other questions in the, well, former Mayor Joyce Seals, obviously, with more council members on your Saginaw Promise Board, these questions were automatic and could be answered on a regular basis. So, I will encourage our council members, if interested, please let me know, because we need to have representation on that, that board for the city, and they will get with me and let me know, and we'll get back with you on those appointments.
And, and Mr. Mayor, also, on last, that makes sure that...
And if I could say this, you do not need permission from the mayor to be on that committee. You, you want to be on the Saginaw Promise, speak up and they'll put you on it. I, I know they will, so.
Absolutely.
All you have to do is just see right here, and she's, just give her a nod of your head, and that's all you got to do. You just look interested, and she's got you.
I'm looking, I'm looking.
There you go. So, Joyce, we got several, so.
And, Mr. Mayor, just one last thing, make sure, and Mr. Manager, that we want to make sure that our employees, just like the school district has done, has made this information available to the employees who might want to support the promise, because it's in their best interest when our population goes up and is stabilized. So, we hope that they will get the vision as well.
You bet. Thank you.